Put in for appeals.
I mean, like, my son started at Parkside Theater very first.
So are they still moving forward?
Brandon, we have an easy night. We just get to...
They tried to do that with, let me see, they moved Shannon.
Yeah, they have law firms, I mean, Morningstar, that's the part of these, you know, that guy, the ghost.
Proceeds, they wanted to move her back. There's no breakaway. You guys don't have a clue. Well, I'll see how soon it has to begin. When I was there, him and I used to get it.
I mean, I know there's a lot of ways they set a way and his...
But you don't know, my, I think when I was at PA, I was on the council.
You know my philosophy, but again, I'm not someone dealing with managers.
Thank you. I would like to call to order the June meeting of the Marshall Planning Zoning Board, if you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman, there are not.
I have a question. Do we have public comments during number eight?
We will. I'll get to that in a minute, yeah. I'm going to mention that. So, yeah, we can, do we need to add that technically as part of the...
Yes.
It says with public comment on the top, so I think we're covered there.
Yes. So, number six, public comment, will be just general public comment related to items that are not on the agenda. If you're here to comment on the Town Center Development Agreement, that would occur under number eight, new business with public comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Any changes to the minutes? I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That also carries unanimously. Thank you. So is there anyone here, as the Director mentioned, that is here for general comment, not to do with the Town Center Development? Seeing none, we will move ahead. So I guess we should probably do the presentation first, and then we can hear the public comment. So we can go ahead and get started.
And I believe Town Manager Zudema is going to start us off with this presentation.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight to discuss the Town Center project. It's been a little while since we've been before you with this one. So we are now at the point where we have the development agreement essentially completed, and so we are bringing you that development agreement tonight for your consideration. With that, we're sort of take two different presentations. The first one will be a presentation from our partners with Singh and some of their consultants that will show you where we're at in some of the design, and let you see what the park will look like, what some of the amenities will look like, and how that's being designed. And also we'll include, I think, some renderings from their multifamily and how that plays into what the park will be and what the park will look like. So we'll let them do that, and then after that, I'll do another review with you of what the content of the development agreement is that you'd be asking to potentially endorse, as far as that, what that means for the town, what our partners bring, and really why we're doing that development agreement around this public-private partnership. So with that, I'm going to offer either Avi or Fred Bellin to come up with the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. This is Avi Grewall with Singh Development. I just wanted to thank you all for your time and hearing us tonight, and all the folks here for public comment are here to listen. I just appreciate everyone being here, but I'm going to just quickly hand it off to Fred Bellin with Clearscapes, who's been one of the lead designers for this project.
Thank you. Good evening. And I'm also here with Nick Kuhn from Kimley Horn. So we're working together on both the vertical construction and the site. So I'll walk you through a little bit of where things are looking currently with the buildings, and Nick will share where things are with the site scape, with the streetscape and the broader park. So... Oh, sorry. I like to offer options. All right, we'll do this. So... So this image represents a broad overview of the park and the Town Center Development. So the park proper is the area shown in green, and the area to the northwest with the gray and the white represents the multifamily complex, which Avi will also be able to show you an image or two of that. So tonight, what we're looking at, this is an enlarged site plan of the park proper, and there are a number of components that are part of the design and part of the development agreement. Up at the north end, near the intersection of Town Hall...
Maybe just adjust the mic a little bit. It looks like it's not quite picking you. There you go.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you. It'll help her brook out when she needs to do the minutes.
Working up from the upper-left corner, near the north edge of the park, we have a public art and water feature component that we'll share in detail. As you move down to the left along Town Hall Drive, that is some of the area where we will be able to incorporate some tree save and have some play areas and some informal occupiable zones. And then in the upper-right are the cottages that extend down Foxglove, which will offer some retail and food beverage opportunities for park visitors. Second image down on the right is the combined toilet buildings to serve the broader park and the cottages. And then the southern end, the porch, represents the stage where you'll have the opportunity to host music and other live events. And then finally, there are some port structures associated with that. So this first image, and I want to start by saying all of these are conceptual views. They generally represent what things look like spatially, but we don't have materiality, color, and some certain level of detail shown at this stage. So this view is looking from Carolina and Foxglove down through the park, and in the foreground, you're seeing the arches, which are the combination public art feature which integrate a mist system for children's play, as well as integrated color-changing LED light systems. This is a view from within the park, along the walkway, looking up towards that feature. And a close-up view as you get into the area with the arches. This is an aerial view, looking south through the park along the cottages, and what you're seeing here is we're starting to integrate a more public promenade with outdoor seating to serve the cottages with the large lawn area to the right. To walk you briefly through some of the building components, this is the combination toilet building. It has two gang toilets with six men's and six women's fixtures, as well as two family toilets. That capacity is sized for up to about 900 people on a day-to-day basis, so it's scaled to meet your common event needs. We've got some other amenities in there. We've got a wellness center for nursing mothers as part of the women's bathroom, and then we're also incorporating some service and electrical components in with this building. Couple of views of the concept architecture for this. Really, the concept for the park, based on our collaboration with staff, is to bring together some of the urban environment and some of the natural environment. So you'll see some brick and some other materials typical for your downtown, and your community merge with some softer elements which pick up some of the organic qualities of the park. and your community merge with some softer elements, which pick up some of the organic qualities of the park. Couple more views of the side of the building, and the back of the building facing Foxglove. Another feature that we're working with your team on is the ina, integration of potentially some, um, electronic elements, uh, which you're seeing the screens here, which could function as wayfinding, information kiosks, or public art. That piece is, is in design process currently. Similar to the south of the stage, this is a support building, to provide some support for talent, or actors, or performers for the stage. We have a small green room and toilet section there. And then we also have some general storage and some support space for the community garden. And similarly, picking up some of the same design language, with some of the electronic, um, signage and art feature, facing Foxglove. And then to the left with the fence, you can see, uh, the end of the community garden. And then this is a view looking down the sidewalk in front of the cottages on Foxglove, towards that support building, with the terminal view, with the public art and wayfinding. And then at the south end of the park, we are looking at a multi-functional stage structure, which will be fit up to accommodate a range of musical events and other live performances. Again, we're working with staff to coordinate programming and technical capabilities for this component as we speak. And then this is a view from the north end of the park, with the stage in the background, and then you can see what we call the pockets to the right, which are an area of natural landscape, trees, some informal gathering areas, and some play space. Uh, this is the range of the play type equipment that we're currently looking at. Um, a lot of it are natural elements that are treated to withstand weather, to, um, kind of align with the character of the park, as well as some shared seating, some hammocks, and some other casual engagement spaces. This admittedly is a placeholder at this point in time. Uh, there is an interest in doing an interactive sign component, visible from Town Hall Drive. Uh, we do not yet have a name for the park, it will not be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. But we wanted to provide a sense of scale, um, through the collaboration with staff, um, what the interest is in providing in this location. Um, and then finally, perhaps the least interesting part of the park project, uh, this is located to the parking lot, um, but it's essential to successful performance of the park. This incorporates a combined trash area, where we're able to internalize all of the dumpster and waste for the park and for the cottages, to help manage odor and pests. And then it's also providing some essential storage space for the town, um, for equipment, for Christmas and holiday decorations and other material, that they'll need to support the operation of the park. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Nick, to talk about the streetscape and the park design.
Uh, good evening. Um, you'll see a little bit of a transition, uh, in terms of the content, in regards to the streetscape and, uh, some of the public realm, uh, as we've gotten a little bit more input from, uh, council members as well as staff into, uh, colors and materials, uh, for this. So we'll see a little bit of a transition. The first couple slides here, uh, highlight some of the input from Town Council, uh, in regards to this, uh, the overall style and materials. You'll see here a couple comments or questions with comment and input from council, uh, and some images here on the right that represents those, uh, that input. So, uh, reflecting a more traditional look with modern accents is, uh, a preference with materials, uh, as well as a mix of warm colors with materials, so reds, tans, and browns. Uh, and you can see some of those representations, um, from precedent images to the right, uh, representing that type of color palette, as well as a blending, uh, or desire to blend this material with the surrounding architecture, uh, for the town center. Um, as well as, uh, a representation of textures, the bottom right image reflects, uh, how some of those colors might be used to define zones. You can see the, uh, traffic, um, uh, lanes are represented by sort of one color in the image below, as well as the parking areas represented by another color, and the pedestrian areas represented by other colors. So you can have a, a, a very complimentary palette of colors, but still, um, defining the zones across, uh, these public use areas. So the areas that we're talking about for streetscape improvements are shown with the blue shading. Uh, this represents, uh, Ca- uh, Carolina Street from the Town, um, Hall Roundabout, east towards Church Street, as well as the new Foxglove extension from Carolina down to Town Hall Drive. The parking area associated with the town green area shown in the bottom of the image, as well as a small portion between the mixed use of Block A, uh, on the north side of Carolina Street, and the existing, uh, Wake County Library. Representing what some of these different material zones within that, uh, shaded area, we have approximately ten different zones, um, identified here. Now, there wouldn't necessarily be, um, ten different material palettes for that. Uh, several of these are common in their elements, as you go down the list here. You'll see a couple, um, represent right in the middle of the ledge in there, intersection zone, crosswalks. Um, different materials or textures might be used, but maybe the same kind of colors. But we have several different representations here, from asphalt, uh, to other pavers, and other, um, highlights here, that represent those different materials. And just another highlight representing the difference between some of the vehicular and pedestrian areas of the public realm. You'll see in this image of a rather, um, fifty-fifty sort of split between those, in terms of the red representing primarily vehicle areas, and yellow representing, uh, pedestrian areas. Uh, and this is a little bit into how the materials might be utilized, even though they may look very similar across. The, um, aspects of constructability in these areas will be an important aspect as we go into design, um, for the vehicle-rated areas versus pedestrian areas, uh, and those, um, subgrades that are associated with these different, um, pavements and hardscapes. This image is just an extension of that, towards, uh, along Carolina, from Foxglove on the left side towards Church Street, the right side here. You'll see a little difference in terms of the amount of, um, pavers in this area of Carolina. This is representing more of a temporary element along Carolina between Foxglove and Church, uh, Street here, with a little bit more. The yellow line represents a multi-use trail that will be the primary pedestrian, um, facility along this stretch. Foxglove Drive and an extension from Carolina down to Town Hall, uh, represents an opportunity to really create a destination in itself and complement Town Green. Uh, this is a unique setting in that we, uh, are proposing a curbless street or an event street, uh, for this, um, um, block. And so what you'll represent here is from the section and plan views, um, how those materials will be represented across here with those horizontal, um, access from street into the parking areas and the pedestrian zones on either side, as a real seamless way for pedestrians to enjoy the space during events. And the plan view represents, uh, how that may function with exhibit and, uh, tents, as well as food trucks or other, um, uh, uses along this stretch. And images to the left represent how a curbless street may represent or look as well. And looking at that in plan view, again, just a little bit more closer in terms of the, the color of the materials and how that would be represented, you'll see how the intersection from Carolina and Foxglove at the top of the image, on down to the intersection, uh, of the parking spaces on Foxglove at the south end, um, are highlighted with different, uh, styles of pavers, as well as the mid-block crossing points, to really highlight those as pedestrian zones within even the vehicle areas. Now, Carolina Street, uh, is a little bit different in that we have, uh, an existing portion, uh, that would be improved upon. This represents the block between the Town Hall Roundabout and Foxglove. So the space between Town Green, which is on, represented on the right side of the plan view and section, and then the multifamily or Block A area, which is on the left side of the section and plan view. In this case, you'll see that on the left side with the multifamily, a consistency with that streetscape with a wider fourteen-foot pedestrian zone, that would include a furnishing zone, as well as a walking zone, within that, consistent with the, uh, Foxglove, uh, materials. And then we have unique aspects on the Town Green side with a, uh, twelve-foot multi-use trail, as well as a two-foot step zone, uh, in pavers, as well as additional pedestrian walkways on the Town Green side. The images again on the left represent some of those precedent ideas. And then extending that street, uh, profile from Foxglove on the left side of the image to Church Street on the right side, again, representing a more temporary condition, uh, with the multi-use trail being developed, uh, and then eventually, um, having additional pedestrian, uh, sidewalk zones on both the north and south sides extending, um, at a later phase. And then ultimately highlighting one of the intersections here, this is at Carolina and Foxglove. And this represents a unique idea for the town, a tabled intersection, uh, condition. So in this case, the intersection would be elevated, um, and this would actually highlight this as a pedestrian zone. You can see the enhanced pavers and design of this, and so there would be a, a ramp up from both directions on Carolina, as well as the northern side of Foxglove into the intersection, and then to the south, uh, which is represented by the bottom right image portion, is the Foxglove extension into the Town Green area. That would be again a flush level, uh, into that event space, uh, event street block area. Um, one piece of in, uh, input received from council was, uh, the potential integration of, uh, the town's M logo into the intersection as well. And so this represents another opportunity for further town branding within this. And then we'll have some, uh, samples of some of the palettes, uh, in terms of lighting. Within the public realm area, uh, the town has chosen to, uh, utilize Duke lighting, uh, uh, options here. And so these are the, the palette that Duke, uh, provides. And so, we'll be coordinating the ultimate selection of these with the lighting that will be in the Town Green area, which will be town-owned and operated lighting. Uh, and so you'll see a couple, um, uh, or a few options here from, from Duke. And the lighting that this represents are shown in some of the yellow highlights. So we're, again, we're talking along the streets, uh, Fox, um, Foxglove is in Carolina, for this lighting. And again, the extension of Carolina between Foxglove and Church. Then ultimately, the lighting, uh, within the, the Town Green itself, uh, has a, again, a unique opportunity, a more pedestrian level of lighting as well. And so, we do have a palette that will be coordinated along with the street lighting, and this is a diagram that represents some of the different types of lighting that, that the Town Green, uh, may provide. And this includes, um, a pole light or pedestrian-level light, that would be approximately about twelve feet in height, as well as ballards around, um, the pedestrian circulation routes, that would be primary and secondary ballards for, for low-level lighting, as well as opportunities for other aesthetic lighting, such as tree uplighting and string lighting, as well as lighting represented here in, uh, one of the bottom images, of under-bench lighting with some of the seat walls. So the red items on the diagram to the right represent some of those unique lighting opportunities. Um, and, and you can see some of those integrated into that. I believe that concludes that portion. Thank you.
Uh, so this image here is, uh, of Block A, as referenced in the, the plan views from earlier. Um, this is the mixed-use, um, building. Um, to the left here, that's off-screen, where you see the string lights, um, that's the existing, uh, Wake County Library. And then on the right-hand side is the mixed-use building. The ground floor there would be a mix of retail space, uh, uh, of which the town is, uh, committing to leasing space for, for their own use. Um, and then on the far-left-hand side of that bottom floor would be a leasing office and a co-working space, uh, for the residents of the building. Um, up above that, on the second floor, is a, a kind of a rooftop area, uh, views. I mean, if you can picture the plan view, it would have views out to the, the Town Green area. And then above that would be multifamily, uh, residential units. Um, this view is again, kind of the same side of the building, but from the intersection of Foxglove and Carolina Street. Uh, again, the retail on the bottom floor and residential above. In this view, you can see the, uh, Wake County Library, there in the back, on the left-hand side of the screen. And then as you turn the corner, um, you can kind of see that, the idea here is to kind of mix the, uh, somewhat institutional, modern look of the library, and then as you turn the corner down, Foxglove, uh, blend it back into more of a traditional downtown brick look. And that's it.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I would suggest if you have questions about the presentation up to this point, we might do those, and then we'll get into the development agreement document.
Make sure we're at that point, yeah. So, any, any questions from the board, Sergeant?
I have a question, or, you know, the curiosity about, you know, that, how those, you've been, you would be collecting the trash in one, uh, locate, location, right, one building, right? How that, how the odor from the trash will be, uh, you know, the, uh, controlled? Will you be using any specific type of technology to control odor, or how does that work?
Yeah, yeah, the odor for the trash.
It's a great question. So, one of the things we've learned doing a lot of hospitality work is we generally try to avoid open-air dumpsters, for the very reasons you're describing. So it is in a conditioned space with fan ventilation. So by maintaining the temperature and keeping it down, we slow the decay of the food. Um, obviously, that would be done in partnership with the, um, service intervals for the dumpsters. And then we also have fan technology in there to provide ventilation, and then, excuse me. We also have chemical treatments within the dumpsters themselves.
Just a quick question, on the, throughout the presentation, you showed some areas where there's benches or elongated seating. Will they be designed with a deterrent for sleeping?
Absolutely, so, um, at this level, we're, um, these are high-level conceptual plans, just to show the overall spatial arrangement. And we are beginning the process of working through the detailing. As we get there, we will be considering a lot of details, like the finished surface, the skateboard deterrents, any plant materials, so on and so forth.
And, and result, we'll have those features in there?
Yes, that's correct.
My only question is the field area, is that dog-free, or will that be a dog play area?
That's a great question, I'd say that's more on the operational side.
So I think there will be times that there may be dog events there, but I think we also want to be careful in terms of preserving that as well for, you know, what the primary use is for the activity center. Um, so, but again, that is sort of, we'll figure that out as we get into the operation and better understand what the final design is, and how can we accommodate that without doing any damage, or, or, and having a negative impact on that Town Green?
I think that the dog park just down the street, hopefully.
That's what I'm thinking, I mean, there's already been a million dollars spent on a field, and now we have another one, and you know it's gonna be full of dogs. And then people won't want to go there for entertainment, because there's feces all over the grass. So that, that's what my concern is.
Correct, and that's what we want to protect against. So, one, one of the things to go a little sidestep, if I could, uh, Mr. Chair, is that one of the things we're gonna look at for this entire project, is that the town center's not gonna be just restricted to the area you're seeing. Uh, we're gonna be doing a marketing campaign, a signage campaign, that the town center is really this entire area, which is gonna be inclusive of the park across the street behind you, Indian Creek, also a veterans memorial that's planned to go in there in the future, the dog park, which will come in across the street behind us, and so link all that together, and even to some extent, the historic Christian church. So there's different opportunities for different interests, um, but yeah, we would prefer that dogs primarily do go to the dog park.
Great, thank you.
Can you talk a little bit more about the parking? How many dedicated spaces there will be on the street? And then, in the dedicated parking lot, how many spaces there will be, and what the ingress and egress will be?
Yeah, let me go to, uh, one of the site plans here, alright. So we, we have a number of different, um, areas there for, for parking. What we're doing right now is, uh, ultimately, there'll be, um, starting from Town Hall, the southern entrance, or at the, um, um, uh, bottom of the image here, you'll see, um, a, a, a shared kind of used parking space that will be pavers. This will be, um, for, for multiple access for the daily use of the Town Green, but also access, uh, to the, uh, event area as well. Uh, you'll see a connection there that, uh, ultimately, service vehicles can be able to access that area. area. And then from there, you'll see along Foxglove, there are on-street parking spaces to serve the cottages and the town green throughout that entire block that will be there. And so this portion of Foxglove may be closed at times for events as well, but for daily use, they'll be parking along there. We'll also, on the right side of the image, you'll see, again, additional parking where we have it, some of the parking today for the public safety facility, and that will be served for town needs and public use for accessing the public safety and planning staff needs. And then Carolina has on-street parking for the block in front of the multifamily as well. That is there today. We're adding parking to the south side of Carolina on the town green side. And then also, additional parking is going to be added along Town Hall Drive, along the town green portion. So it's actually a traffic lane will be removed from Town Hall and added as parking. So it'll be essentially on-street parking all the way around the town green for those uses. And then additional parking available and structured parking for, in the multifamily building as well, and on-street parking further down Foxglove and on Jeremiah as well. So parking throughout the entire district on this.
Thank you. One thing I don't see in the drawings is any bicyclists. Is that by design, or is bicycling going to be allowed in the multi-use areas?
So the, the plans do represent having a multi-use trail that extends, and actually on this image, you can see across, you know, Town Hall Drive, kind of mid-park, and then the multi-use trail, which will be available for cyclists and pedestrian use, is on the park side along Carolina. It will extend all the way down Carolina towards Church Street. So we'll have that multi-use trail connectivity through this entire district.
Thank you. My next question, I think, is more for staff. Are the hours going to be regulated?
I think that may be something that's still under discussion, but I would refer to Town Manager Zudeman on that.
So yeah, that's a discussion I think we still have to have, as we see how uses potentially sort out. And again, we'll have, I think, 80 spaces reserved in the deck that will generally be always available to town use and to public use. And then we still have to have some conversation about what's ultimately the most effective slash efficient way to use these other spaces that exist there now. And then the other thing I would offer is, you know, we do anticipate a future phase, a Phase Two of this project that would come out on the other side of Foxglove, back out towards Church Street. And we do anticipate additional parking would come in that next phase when that occurs. That won't be there for this initial start, but as it hopefully gains popularity and gains use and interest, we'll be adding additional parking in a future phase as well.
Thank you. But I was really more talking about, you know, what are the hours of the park going to be? If people want to walk in, they want to bike through the park, whatever.
The park itself, I'm sorry. So the park itself will typically be, most of our parks right now are daylight to dusk is the way they operate unless we have a particular facility. So for example, at Church Street Park, there is the tennis courts that are open later because they have lights on them. And of course, we may have rental uses that we go up until no later than 10:00 PM. If there's events on the cricket field, whether it's a match or other things going on in the park. So I would anticipate a similar approach here, that generally it would be a dusk to dawn, or excuse me, a dawn-to-dusk use, but that we could light it up for other uses after the sun goes down.
Okay. I assume they're going to be like doggy stop stations?
Yes. Yeah, we certainly expect there will be dogs coming through, so yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. I had the same question about parking, so thank you for asking that one. That does concern me a little bit, but I appreciate the responses there. The other question I had in looking at some of the images, the multifamily dwellings look maybe larger than I would have anticipated. And that's probably just, you know, I haven't looked at this in a while. Can you comment at all, like, how many units are there going to be, and how many residents do you think will be added to this part of town? Just thinking about some of the issues that we already deal with in terms of traffic, schools, et cetera. So we'd be interested to hear more about that.
The current plan has about 221 units. And to answer, the unit size is pretty standard, apartment-sized units. It might look bigger because on that side, I guess on the park side of the building, where the intention right now is to do much larger windows, to get a lot more natural light in there. In terms of residents added to the area, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, 221 units, probably in the neighborhood of 400 residents in there, because there'll be some vacancy. There's always a little bit of that. So, you know, 400, 425 residents probably added to the area. But we anticipate, with all the town investment here, with the town green and the trails, that most people that would want to live here would be walking, biking, that it wouldn't be adding, you know, traffic or parking demand to the area at least, because there would be parking there ideally on Friday and be able to just walk and hang out in the park the rest of the weekend.
Yeah, I guess the traffic concerns are probably more during the week in terms of rush hour. I mean, they're probably not all going to be working here. So just thinking about some of the intersections up here that are already a problem. Like, are there additional plans? Is anything going to change there, or?
Believe we had, we did have a traffic study done, correct?
Yeah. As part of the planning for this project, it included traffic and parking studies. And ultimately, this, even though we're looking at a very small piece of this overall project, the connectivity is very close to having sort of a grid connecting. So we have multiple connection points along Carolina, Jeremiah, Town Hall. So several different options for folks to be able to get into this area. So it's not dependent upon a single intersection or two to really serve this use. And then also, the multimodal connectivity of this is a very exciting part because we have sidewalk connections on all streets, as well as the multi-use trail connectivity. So really encouraging folks from the surrounding neighborhoods to be able to walk and bike into this area for their uses as well.
Thank you.
I had just a couple of questions. With your phase, this phase here we're talking about, in regards to everybody there, is there going to be any, because you're taking some lane or whatever it might be for parking, is any of these streets possibly going to be converted to one-way, or are the flow going to be considered as a one-way for traffic? Just to monitor the traffic?
None of the streets are identified for one-way, and really for that opportunity to have better connectivity, it's encouraged to have two-way connectivity. So every street, including Foxglove, which is more of less the event street, is also two-way traffic. And so Foxglove particularly would have probably a much lower posted speed limit along it as well, just because it would be a highly pedestrian-zoned block. But yeah, all streets would be two-way streets, remaining that.
I was wondering, when you mentioned that, closing one, sometimes people will convert to certain parts all, you know, all one-way.
And currently, the plans include, as part of that, taking the right lane of the northbound Town Hall Drive for, and adding parking on the park side of Town Hall, is also removal of a sort of turn lane or slip lane onto Carolina. And looking at the traffic for this area, that is not necessarily needed for this amount of street capacity. So we're actually gaining a little bit of land for the town park aspect of that. But it's still maintaining the roundabout function and being able to turn onto Carolina with two-way traffic on Carolina.
Thank you very much. Another question, I guess it would be more staff. In regards to this project here, in conjunction with everything else that's being planned for possibly Church Street with the flyover, it's planned on McCrimmon. Because of that construction and temporary closing of roads to do some work, or whether possibly, I don't know what's going to happen, what's the timing with this in regards to, and in conjunction with the flyover?
And are you referring to the flyover at McCrimmon and 54?
It seems like it's far, but it's not, when you think about the overall flow?
No, I think, you know, right now, we anticipate this project to kick off in spring of '25, and potentially start to see some activity 24 to 30 months after that. Right now, the McCrimmon flyover is scheduled, as of today, to let summer of '25. So there will be some simultaneous work going on. But my understanding is that, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they're going to make their best effort to really minimize a lot of traffic interference as they work on the McCrimmon flyover, because so much of that is in an area that's outside of existing roadways. So I don't know, we necessarily anticipate a real rub there, if you will, between those projects.
So I had a couple of questions. Looking at, and this is more technical, and hopefully this is all, some of the colors, you know, I'd like the idea of the street without a curb, because that does allow you to kind of close things down, people can walk around, you're not worried about people tripping. I'm not sure that the colors that you showed pictures of really properly delineate the road. You know, I would just say, we need to make sure there's a vast difference between. I mean, one of those pictures just looks shockingly like three very similar colors, and just concerned me a bit.
Yeah, I can flip through that. Yeah, with council input on sort of the palette of colors here, there's actually a pretty good range of options between utilizing reds and tans and browns. You can see how the crosswalk in the bottom right image is more highlighted. There are specific requirements in terms of the level of contrast that those pavers must have for the safety of pedestrians and others crossing there.
Just thinking, you know, papers fade over time, and they've sort of, everything tends to become one sort of shade of gray with, like, road dirt. I mean, it just, you know, much contrast, since you're doing something that's very novel, I can't think of another place within this entire area that would be done the same way. It is, yeah.
So the projects shown here are actually in the region, in Carolina, and there can be challenges with some types of pavers in terms of the darker hues fading over time. What's being proposed are clay pavers, which hold their color much, much better, and retain those colors, those nice vibrant colors.
And I was, I mean, I'm glad that the team is mostly from this area, so that you understand dryasic soil, because pavers don't do very well with vehicle or traffic, unless you triple up your sections and everything else. So I'm assuming that that will be all taken into account. And we won't have a repeat of Kerry having to tear up their little intersection. Oh, and with the leased space in the multi-building, how much is the town percentage-wise going to be leasing from that? And I guess what would be, what is the purpose of the town lease there?
So our current discussion is approximately 4,000 square feet, and that would be to bring our Parks and Rec administrative offices from way up on aviation, where they're currently, we have some leased space there, and instead have them immediately adjacent to, you know, what will be one of our showcase parks.
And percentage-wise, though, of the total leased space for retail, how much would that take up?
It's roughly 10,000 square feet, so 40%.
So there's enough room for some other uses there that wouldn't be, that would be active. I mean, I mean, let's be honest, the Parks Office isn't an active use as far as generating people and excitement and moving people in and out. It's not your typical retail user.
That, yeah, I mean, that's correct, but I've actually been pleasantly surprised we haven't gone on like a full-out marketing campaign for the, for leasing space, just because, you know, normal users want a space, when they want it, they want it now, kind of thing. They don't want to talk about two, three years down the road. So the folks that we've talked to, and, you know, we've been mostly targeting local operators, coffee shops, restaurants, breweries, ice cream places. You know, surprisingly, they're like, we don't need the drive-by traffic if there's activity, which the town, as you'll hear later with the development agreement, is committing to do X amount of events every month, and just create a vibrancy here. And so the folks that we've talked to so far have said, if there's life, then we like it.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, we can jump ahead, I guess.
Okay.
So I guess, are you going to go over the agreement? Is that what, okay. So I wonder if, since that is somewhat into the weeds, would we want to do public comment based on the sort of ideas of the park and everything prior to doing that? Do you think that would be useful?
I think you certainly can, if that's what your preference is, yes, sir.
I mean, I'm not sure if everybody wants to stay here for that part. I mean, they're welcome to do that, but I don't know what your opinion is.
I'd say that the formal item that the PZB needs to act on, and that the public comment session on, is the development agreement. But I think it was important to provide some context about the project, so that you could better understand that agreement.
We'll apply forward then, all right.
All right. So for those of you that were on PZB when we made this presentation, a lot of this you have seen before, but it's really a refresher, the highlights of what is in the development agreement. Again, this is a public-private partnership. It's designed that way because both the developer and the town can benefit from that. And working together affords a lot of opportunities for both of us to really realize the vision of town council that's been established for this. And that, again, that vision has been consistent, really from 2007 on. They reaffirmed it again in 2021. So it has the same sort of core goals of creating a destination for Morrisville, creating that downtown that hasn't existed. So this development agreement is really the binding document that allows us to start in the direction of construction. So again, we want to provide you with a project update and this town center development agreement, and then ideally seek endorsement of the development agreement before it goes to council later this month. So a few things that have occurred since the last time that we spoke. The town council has approved the rezoning of the town center Phase One properties, so that was important. Again, that also continues to ensure that this project in this area will develop with very specific guidelines in mind of how we would like it to look, how council has a vision for it. Town council also reviewed the town green and related amenities actually twice in both January and February, and you've seen a lot of that imagery tonight. They also reviewed the street skate plan. Again, you were showed that as well. They were shown that once in April, and then the team came back in May and sort of took what they heard and showed it to them. And there was general consensus by council as to the direction they wanted to go, which you saw tonight in the presentation. And then this week, we received a pre-construction estimate. So prior to now, we did not have a current cost estimate. The last one had been really a conceptual estimate. And so we were holding on a pre-construction because obviously, things are changing rapidly, and wanted to make sure that we had an accurate cost estimate for this project. So Singh, our partner, has worked with Bobbitt Construction to come up with that pre-construction estimate. We'll talk about that in a moment. And then obviously, presentations to both you and town council, assuming you endorsed tonight, to move forward with the development agreement. Again, it's the formal legal agreement and contract that's necessary under a public-private partnership for this construction. And we have essentially finalized that with Singh. We are filling in some of the smallest details to wrap that up. But the concept is there, the agreement on what will happen and perhaps what won't happen has all been solidified in the document. What that document also includes is the legal requirements and recitals that we need to have as required by general statute in North Carolina. It also includes what Singh's responsibilities are for all of this work, as well as the town's responsibilities. And it discusses both design and construction requirements. So much of what you have seen tonight from the imagery side is based on those requirements and guidelines that have been established through, I was going to say months, I might need to say years-long process at this point, working with Singh and their consultants. need to say years long process at this point, working with Singh and their consultants. And then there's also exhibits that are attached to this that speak to the description and sale of the property. Again, the town is going to sell a portion of this property to Singh. They will then donate back the area that will primarily be the town center and they will retain ownership of the area where the multifamily is as well as the small parcels where the cottage retail is within the town green. The development plan that we've been working on that, that shows the progress towards the timing and whatever thing will look like, a project schedule, the parking and retail leases. So again, we have a lease for the 80 spaces in the parking deck. And then there will also be a lease for that retail space that we discussed on Carolina Street. We have also worked with Singh. Again, they are going to own the cottage retail, the land that those eight units will go on. And then they're also going to own the buildings, but we have a right of first refusal for the cottage retail. So if in the future they should decide they don't want to continue to control those, the town would have the opt first right of refusal if we chose to purchase those in order to maintain ownership and perhaps what would be built there, even though that's somewhat limited by the rezoning that's been completed. And then of course, the budget estimate for all these public facilities. Again, not going to go through the 100 pages of the document with you, but we'll hit the highlights with you. The full document is attached to your packet and we'll, we'll work from there. Again, there, there will still be some minor adjustments to what's designed and what's proposed because that work continues to go on, continues to be satisfied. Obviously, once we share this with town council on the 25th, there will, I'm sure, be some lengthy conversations around the cost and different amenities and whether we need to discuss alternates or even value engineering. So that could certainly change the cost, that could change the design, but the concept is locked into the development agreement. Again, the legal framework really cites what's required for that public private partnership. Make sure that we're following all the rules there, as is our partner Singh. Recitals about the project overview, the purpose of the agreement, again, how each party benefits. And again, the public hearing, so the first one is tonight. And then we anticipate a public hearing with council in July. We'll use the June meeting to give them a briefing on the project and discuss the cost estimate. They may have some, well, they, I'm sure will have some feedback for us to use. And then we'll come back in July for a public hearing, once we offer them some updates. Again, just walking through the different articles, as you can imagine, there are a number of definitions to define things that are in this. Also talks about responsibilities for the development schedule, talks about our responsibilities related to land cost and how we fund the project. So we have to demonstrate for the development agreement and ultimately for the local government commission or the LGC who reviews any of these type of projects, particularly when they're a public private partnership, so that we can show them that we have reasonable funding means to do this and then it won't negatively impact town business or not as let be able to operate or do the things that we're required to do as a town. As Avi mentioned, our responsibility will be to hold four events per quarter at the town green. We, we in all likelihood could do more than that, but the minimum would be four per quarter with the intention of bringing those people in to support that cottage retail and to build that, you know, that the norm is what am I going to do this weekend? Oh, let's go to the town center. That's a fantastic opportunity to get out and enjoy a show or whatever might be going on there. Our responsibilities also include a management fee to Singh because they'll be managing the entire project as far as construction. Our capital projects team will be involved with that as far as attending meetings and making sure that things are being done that the town expects. But the actual day to day management of the construction will be handled by Singh. And so we'll be paying them a 4% fee to do that. And that includes the, the two primary components that the town will be paying for. The first, of course, is the town green and the amenities related to the town green. And then the second is the infrastructure component of the project. So we'll handle the widening of Carolina Street out to Church Street, or I say, we will fund that. We will fund the Foxglove Drive extension that'll go from Carolina over to Town Hall Drive. And then we'll fund the Town Hall Drive modifications, again, removing that turn or that slip lane, adding some parking spaces. And again, one other small benefit to removing that slip lane is it's going to slow down traffic coming onto Carolina. Because if you've come up this way before, it's, it's a pretty easy slide onto Carolina and you don't really need to decelerate if you don't choose to. We, we want people to slow down. So we're hoping for a lot of pedestrian activity. So using not the slip lane, but the traffic circle will help with that as well. Again, as I mentioned, it's a 4% final construction is the management fee. The current estimate is $19.4 million for construction of all the amenities that are town sponsored. So that management fee would be $776,000 and our total project cost would be approximately $20.2 million as it is established today. Again, I've already sort of addressed this. Singh will manage the construction, the contractors, the subcontractors, and then we'll present invoices for our staff to pay. Again, those invoices all be reviewed by our, reviewed, sorry, reviewed by our capital projects team to make sure that they're valid expenses, that that work is actually being done. And again, the reason for doing that, there are several points to that with one project manager is, you know, it really helps us avoid unanticipated or unexpected conflicts between if we have a construction manager and Singh has a construction manager, you know, you've got to worry about, do we need to stop something so they can do something? There's a lot more coordination that's required as opposed to one group just really managing it all. Again, greater flexibility in adjusting those schedules and potential cost savings, fewer costs, excuse me, fewer coordination meetings where every time a consultant comes to a meeting, we, we pay for that. So if we can do fewer of those meetings, then that's better probably for everybody, at least in the, in the pocketbook. Also in Article Two, again, Singh has some dedicated responsibilities. That includes constructing that parking deck. Again, you will not see that parking deck. It's entirely wrapped by the building so that we believe is advantageous that the parking will be there, but unless you know it's there, you wouldn't see it was there. And then they will also provide that office space on Carolina Street for Parks and Rec admin. And again, that's not necessarily a permanent home of Parks and Rec admin, but it is an initial home to bring them to the area. And again, it also helps us support the kickoff of the entire project by bringing people there. Again, that, that Parks and Rec admin, we also envision as a welcome center, having that staffed where people can come in, get information, depending on the amount of space available, perhaps a small community space there as well. So trying to make good use of that. And again, Singh is also responsible for donating the completed town green back to the town at no additional cost. Article Two, as a side note, also includes what the applicable laws are to make sure that we're meeting those public private partnership requirements in general statute. Just running through some of the other articles, Article Three talks about closing and how we close on the, the agreement. Article Four, due diligence, talking about how that would work. Article Five is the design and construction, and that really speaks to the scope of the work. Talks about the requirement for the parking deck, the multifamily, the commercial and retail amenities, sort of the core functions that will be there. It does include development standards so that, you know, in, in planning is always involved with that, but now we have some very specific development standards based on the rezoning. And again, that really ensures that there's going to be a consistent feel across this project. It's not going to be somebody builds this building and somebody builds another one that they don't match. And that's again, same thing for the way the streetscape is put in and some of the other things. And then it also allows us some input on contractors and subcontractors just to ensure that Singh would not use anyone that we've potentially had a problem or, or didn't feel did quality work in the past. Don't expect that to be an issue, but want to make sure we protect our interests. This also, as I mentioned, I think includes the development schedule, required notification on any proposed cost increases. Again, protecting our interests. If something's going to change, we would know about that. And also how we get the pay applications to make sure that we're getting those verified before we spend any money. Article Six is the insurance. As you can imagine, everybody's got to have insurance for this project. Article Seven is representations and warranties, and that really talks to the commitment between the partners related to the development of the property, the quality of the work, the protection of the town green property while being developed. So that would revert to us if for any reason the project started and stopped, we would still make, we would still get back ownership of that. Don't expect that to be an issue. It verifies that Singh has status to do business in North Carolina and just ensures the successful completion of the project through ongoing collaboration. Obviously, a significant investment here, not only by the town, but also by Singh and what they're doing. Couple more slides. Article Eight is parking deck operations. As we mentioned, we'll have a 30 year lease for a minimum of 80 parking spaces. Those will all be on the first level of the deck. Singh will operate and maintain the deck. We will just lease the spaces and that agreement currently calls for $100 per space with a 3% annual increase for the first five years and then it would be reevaluated after those five years. And again, we've worked with our partner from the School of Government, DFI, the Development Finance Initiative, and have also, you know, reached out to Kerry and to Raleigh and other places to affirm that that is a fair per space rental fee for our deck. And again, the other component of that is that the Development Finance Initiative, who's been involved with us for quite some time now, probably longer than they envisioned, but they've been really good partners and, and offered a lot of good guidance. They get compensated through Singh paying a 1% fee, 1% of the total construction cost to DFI. And based on the current estimate, that would be approximately $194,000. As we start to wrap up, the requirements of the act, it defines the property involved specifically concerns that we currently own all that property in question. Again, you've heard us say, why here? And that's part of why here is because we own all the property and so we can control that and make that work. References to rezoning, which has been completed, and references the dedication of the town green back to the town by Singh once that's completed. Article 11 is legal conditions. If there were to be a default, again, no reason to believe that will be the case, but protecting both parties in that regard. And then Article 12 is just some miscellaneous information. For example, acknowledges that there is a formal now contractual relationship between us based on the development agreement, confirms that it is a legislative act on the part of town council and establishes that in the future, the town will consider prior public private partnership experience as a factor in reviewing future phase proposals. We're not there yet, but we've had lots of conversation. We have a very solid working relationship with Singh and they are interested if we are able to do a future phase. The law does not allow us to guarantee that to them, but we certainly can give them credit for having public private experience, particularly in the town of Morrisville. The development agreement ultimately includes those eight exhibits. We referred to some of those earlier. The legal description of the property, the development plan that shows the, the, excuse me, the imagery and the, and the plan as to how that will work on the site, the development schedule, which I'll speak to in a minute, the land disposition agreement where we're selling land to Singh for approximately a million dollars, the parking lease agreement that we talked about, that retail lease agreement, the right of first refusal is a separate document, and then the overall budget for those public facilities, which will be added. Again, we got what they call a ROM or the rough order of magnitude this week, I think two days ago. So what, what we'll do is before we go to council, we'll have more definition around that as far as what the different amenities cost, what the different components cost. So that if there is consideration, again, of alternates, that would be an easy way to start looking at, if you break pieces out, what those costs might be. The timeline for this project tentatively is June. We are here at PZB and we take it to council. We anticipate review by council in both July and August and then potentially seeking approval in August or in September. And then Singh would pick up with their site plan submittal and ideally approval over the next four to five months and then potentially a March or spring groundbreaking at the site. And I'm happy to take questions in regards to the development agreement and costs.
Thank you. We can start down with Rick this time.
You mentioned that the actual agreement is, is in the documents we have, not just the overview?
It is in there.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's the same thing. Okay. I don't, I don't have anything right now.
Okay.
It's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Just a few.
Sure.
Is there any opportunity for state or federal funding or grant money?
There is. So, yeah, so we've actually got a request out right now through Congresswoman Ross's office. So every year they do some earmark funding and they allow municipalities to submit projects. And then she ultimately gets to submit 15 projects for consideration against, you know, other, all the other representatives, but a million dollars to support the town center is one of the 15 initiatives she submitted. And then we're constantly, our grants team is constantly looking for opportunities related to a park or to an amenity or to anything that might be out there as well, yes.
Is there any requirement that, you know, the subcontractors be minority owned businesses or at least some of them?
So we have encouraged that with Singh. Because it's not technically our contract, we can't require that, but we have had the conversation to ask them to consider what our policy is. You know, our goal is for contracts over $300,000 to have at least 10% of those contracts, construction contracts involve MWBE. And so we've shared that with Singh and asked them to, to try to honor that to the best of their ability.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just some clarification on the expectations today. When was this publicly posted? You said there was a copy of the details posted somewhere. We received notice 48 hours ago, first time we put eyes on this document. So there seems to be some implication. We've reviewed this, the public has reviewed it, and we have a document with large sections missing. I mean, it's kind of hard to make a decision when you just view something and then you don't have schedules, you don't have costs, you don't have details of the project other than some pictures. So what are you expecting from us as far as an endorsement?
So these type of questions. And if you, you know, if you're, if you're comfortable with the development agreement, knowing that there will be some final details added to it, recognizing there will be some changes over time, because again, it's, it's at a very good design phase, but things will, will get tweaked or changed or moved in that. Again, council may have some specific requests of us. So for, for you, our, our ask is that you endorse the concept of the development agreement. And if you have any specific questions as to what's not included, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
I, I do. For example, the cost, the overall cost to the city is important. The property where they're building the apartments, was that sold to them? So that used to be free parking for the library, that used to be city parking, and now we're going to pay $100 a month per space for 80 spaces. So over the 30 years until that expires is $3 million. So we sold that property to them? Is that the idea? And then we're going to rent those spaces back and rent office spaces back and use our property? I guess without the total scope of what's happening, it does not seem like this is an advantage to the city. It seems like it's an advantage to the developer.
So I understand why it looks that way. So part of our responsibility in the public private partnership is that we, you know, Singh has set a return on investment level that I will tell you is, is lower than what we would typically see in any of our projects. And so in order to match or align with what they're doing in terms of building all this for us and donating back, donating back the town green to us and other amenities, we have an obligation to do certain things to make sure that, that they can, don't lose money on this project because we're in a partnership. So part of that is renting baked spaces to ensure that there is some payback to Singh in that regard, because we're also very limited by state statute as to what we can and can't do. So for example, we can't waive fees for them. Even though we're in a partnership, we don't waive any fees for them. We can waive our own fees. We're not going to charge ourselves to do work, but we can't waive the fees for Singh. We also can't just, you know, donate to the project. We have to have very specific things that we can fund in terms of what the work is that they're doing. But we, because it's a public private partnership, it makes it a little different than a normal project would be where it is also about making sure that we're, we're understanding what each of us is contributing to that project to ultimately get all the good that's coming with it. But I understand your question, but again, the, the advantage there is, is partially because we're going to get a town green, we're going to get that retail, we're going to get the cottage retail because of some of the work they're doing. So some of our investment in the project is not actually in the project, but is through funds over time that that will help them as they reach out and have to do loans to make sure that they can fund the project overall.
But that's that mystery amount. So as a person that lives here, what I see is another ballpark, essentially is what it is, some parklets that have some string playground areas in a sitting area and a couple more shops that might be half vacant. In exchange for that, we're giving up a large amount of property. So I'm asking, how much did you sell it to them for?
We sold that to them for $1,070,000 for all the property that they're purchasing. And part of that is there was an assessment done on that property that was an independent, independent assessor did. And what they have to look at is normally you would expect that property to perhaps be worth more than the million dollars. But the way they assessed it was looking at what the limitations are on it. So if some, if a developer just not in a partnership with us had purchased that, they could come in and build anything they wanted and do the best and highest could come in and build anything they wanted and do the best and highest use. We've restricted that best and highest use for Sing by requiring them to build a town green, by requiring them to have the cottage retail, by requiring certain streetscapes and other things. So that, we, we paid a million, excuse me, they paid us a million dollars for the land because that was what the assessment of the value of the land is based on the restrictions that are placed through the rezoning.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. I thought we were paying for all of the improvements. They were going to invoice every thirty days for, so we're paying for the cost of the improvements. They're taking the land and they're giving the land back, but we're paying for all of the improvement, all of the construction and all of the work. What, did I misunderstand?
We, we are paying for that, for our portion of the project. Um, but again, them building multifamily and them doing commercial and other retail is going to help draw the people that we need to activate this space as well.
But the space is a field. So we're bringing people in to activate a park.
Well, it's going to have a stage, we're going to have events there, we're going to have concerts there. Uh, many of our town events can move there and have a more um, attractive space to meet in. We can also activate that space with different things over time, uh, as we see, you know, we'll be speaking with the community determining what amenities might be, uh, possible as in that green space in the lawn. Uh, and again, that, yes, there is the, the cottage retail and other things that we hope will draw people. There's the water feature in the front that will be an activity. And then with that, that, what I referenced about that larger town center concept is to bring people to this area to take advantage of all the different amenities that we as the town will have.
But they're coming to this area for the parking spaces that we're paying for. So we're going to put in essentially three million dollars. They're buying all of the property for a million over thirty-year period just to rent those parking spaces, not even to rent for Parks and Recreation. We're going to spend three million dollars with the assumption it's to get visitors here. Why won't we even put parking meters there? I'm sorry, I, I guess without the costs, without numbers, this just seems, I love the idea of what's happening there. Don't get me wrong, it's just without the numbers, it just seems to me that this isn't very good financially for the city and it's just because I don't have any information to look at. So for me, it's not even something I could voice an opinion on because I don't have the numbers. I don't know what's the benefits of the city other than we have a nice park. I mean, there's, there's a lot of open fields around here to play some music, I suppose.
I would agree with that. I completely agree. I think, um, you know, we're really struggling to understand exactly what is being asked of us to weigh in on. There's, there's so many aspects here, between the economic, the, the legal aspects of it, the project management components, the M and A, you know, the, the diligence aspect of it, you know, what specifically are we being asked to do it? And then we need the information to actually be able to revise it. I mean, on a cold read, I looked at this and said they want to, you know, spend eighteen hundred dollars on half a swing. That provided sticker shock and concern. Right? So I think we need, you know, some level of guidance around that to weigh in with some, some facts. Now, that's really my only, only comment.
Okay.
Ms. Zuderman? I don't really have anything to add. I mean, there, there were a few blank spots. I mean, I definitely, I mean, I, I didn't read every word of this, but I did go through the whole thing on the skim and there were a decent number of pages, this to be added later. Um, and obviously we're getting relatively close to the council voting on it. So the assumption is that those things are later is going to be relatively soon in order for them to vote, because they're not going to vote on something that's an incomplete agreement.
Correct.
And I, I guess we just expect that imminently, but just not now. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, so let me ask you this. So the idea of tonight is to vote on the conception and the attempt to get it moving within council going forward? If there's any changes coming up, the actual more concrete stuff as it comes along, if there's any changes, we, will it come back to planning and zoning or will it just go back to council?
It would typically go to council, but we can certainly come back to you if that's your interest.
Yeah, I will say, I did not have time to review it in detail. I mean, typically we get a week, I think, and we had two days and I just wasn't able to look at it. So I would agree. I mean, I don't necessarily, if what we're being asked to do is endorse the whole thing, I would not say that I'm prepared for that.
Just want to go back to the issue of highest and best use. You said that you restricted it based on what you wanted Sing to develop. But if an assessor or an independent appraiser was to go out there and do a, you know, an appraisal, I assume the highest and best use would be something that gets us more than a million dollars for the land that we sold to Sing. Is that something you agree with or disagree with?
Yes, if, and so I mentioned, if we, if that was just purchased by a developer with no restrictions other than, you know, typical zoning, it would certainly have a higher value to that developer. But because we put those limitations on what Sing can and cannot build and not, not just that, but I mean, it's restrictions, you know, per sort of block and very specific about what, you know, council would like to see there. So that, that was taken in consideration by the appraiser.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that it might not, if, if the land is worth more than what Sing is buying it for, then I don't know that a million dollars is necessarily the best use of the taxpayers' money, uh, when they could probably get a lot more than that. You know, if a developer was going to come in and purchase it.
Yes, you could, but then you wouldn't necessarily have a town center and you wouldn't have the amenities that were requiring to come with that.
You would have a bunch of apartments.
Yeah. Correct.
What I'm, what take a look at, you could do that. You could sell for, what, hundreds of times, whatever it might be possibly, I don't know. But the thing is, you're, you're selling an idea of a continuity, like a, a town. You're selling a concept, whereas when you mentioned there, this person buy this and build this and they could do it, they could do this over here. So you'd have a hodgepodge and not a flow. And I think what you're trying to take a look at is a flow and continuity and actually having that concept to bring people in. And there is a cost to do.
There is. I mean, we, we are, we are paying for some things that are not tangible today. Um, we are paying for the concept, we are paying for the ability to draw people, to provide another community amenity. Um, you know, it's one of the things we consistently get asked for is more green space, more open space. So providing that with also an activity center, with also the opportunity to use that stage to do different acts and presentations. Um, so that is all a part of that. And, you know, this is phase one of what we anticipate to be a multi-phase project to continue to expand that same methodology into those future phases so that it's a consistent theme across it and it is ultimately what town council envisioned, you know, as many as seventeen years ago for the area.
So I was looking through, I mean, we don't really have, you know, generally we have a statement that's given that is sort of what we're asked for, which we, I, I haven't seen that, did I miss it in the packet? I think that would help a little bit if we were a little more focused on what that would be, because it is a little bit open-ended.
Right. So there is a resolution in your packet, a draft resolution. Um, so any action you'd be taking, we'd be, we'd be looking for a motion to either approve or deny that resolution. Um, there's been some discussion about, you know, what the ask is, kind of what the, the role of the PZB is. Um, I'll go back to some of the comments that were made about, um, really looking at the overall concept of the agreement and the framework of what it tries to accomplish as part of a public-private partnership. When we get into a lot of those dollar amounts, um, those are admittedly more of a budget discussion, um, that will continue to occur at the town council level.
This is what we want to vote on right here, what you just put up.
Right. So this is the resolution that will ultimately be addressed to the town council and what they'd be asked to approve for this project. So yeah, with that, this is, this would be what we ultimately ask them to do and what we would ask you to review. Uh, so this is, again, establishing sort of the background behind how we got into this public-private partnership, um, and how the town will benefit, how the Sing development will benefit as required by the public-private partnership statute in North Carolina. Uh, speaks to the exhibits that are attached, uh, talks about the proper and due notice of tonight's public hearing. We'll certainly do proper and due notice for the public hearing, uh, with town council tentatively slated for July. Uh, and then from there, it goes down into showing the exhibit, which is a location map, and you've seen just more detail behind that. There's the legal description and pins of what that full town center project is. Uh, and then the development agreement is the document that's attached.
Sure, go ahead.
I have another question, just around, you, you've mentioned several times partnership. I don't remember, somewhere in the document, it said you were not a partnership. And then at another point, it was saying that Sing would submit all of the invoices to you. So it was almost like they were an owner's rep, a general contractor and a partner. And all of those were captured somehow in the legal terms and descriptions, but you have very different results. So if they are representing the city as an owner rep for your portion, at the same time they're building their portion, there's a conflict of interest there. And so I saw it phrased different ways and tonight you're calling them a partnership. So is there, other than this agreement, is there something else around it? Or are you going purely off of the hundred and one pages that you sent out?
Yeah, the one hundred and one pages is ultimately the development agreement that specifically dot, excuse me, defines what the partnership is. It is a public-private partnership. We're working under the North Carolina General Statute that lays out the, the information around that partnership. And then it does speak to us, speak in a contractual arrangement through the development agreement.
So they can make decisions to spend money without your input?
No, we have language in the development agreement that indicates if there's any cost increases, that that would be put to the town before any decisions would be made to spend. There will be that budget that will be approved. If they're working within that budget, then they'll submit those invoices to our staff for approval. And if there's any cost increases, those will be presented prior to any additional money being spent.
Are you sharing typical project management software that you're seeing all those invoices coming in and you're seeing the graphs that are showing, I'm on schedule and I'm under budget? Are you having shared software?
Yes, we, we will have access to the software that Sing's contractor will ultimately use. And again, our staff will be participating in what I'm sure will initially be weekly, uh, and then probably over the term of it, monthly construction meetings to get those updates, to have access to those records, to understand where we are on the, the schedule and then what some of those different tasks are and where we are overall in the timeline.
Does your engineering team will have those basic KPIs that they're able to easily track without digging through all of the?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the only other question I have is, um, first right of refusal is only fifteen days on those leasing, on those cottages. So if they took an offer, you only have fifteen days to produce money, is there any, that seems awful short when it takes thirty days to pay an invoice, where would you get that kind of money in fifteen days and why was it so short?
Let me find that. So, you know, typically what we would do is if the council were supportive of that, we would have the right, we'd have the right to acknowledge to them that we want to be the, we want to invoke our right of first refusal. We don't have to pay for it in fifteen days, we don't have to have that purchase agreement made in fifteen days. We just have to invoke our right of first refusal to be able to negotiate with Sing on those properties before they could go to anyone else. So they would notify us of intent to sell. We have fifteen days to say, yes, we want first refusal or no, we don't, and then they could open it to the market.
And who needs to be involved in that decision? How would you accomplish that in fifteen days?
So that would be staff, uh, making a review of that. And then like any property acquisition, it would go to council.
Because then that would also be a large sum of money to be able to maintain the property, because they're going to have the cottages. So the green's going to be in the middle and that strip of property right along the other side of the sidewalk belongs to Sing. So they have the ability to sell that and do something else with it completely, because you don't have any requirements of what stays there and you only have fifteen days to make that decision?
We have fifteen days to decide if we want to invoke our right of first refusal to negotiate with them on any of those properties if they were to choose to try to put them on the market.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay. So, uh, with no other questions, I will open the, um, public comment period for this project. So if we have anyone in attendance that would like to speak, um, about this project, please make your way over to the microphone. Uh, we'll also need you to sign the sign-in sheet, uh, as well. I will open the comment period.
Secretary Dodson has the sign-in sheet, I believe, so we could call up, um, individuals that had signed up. And then if you haven't signed up, um, I believe it's over, it's in the back of the room and, and the lady with the blonde hair is pointing to it.
Yeah, all right. So if anyone has signed up already, please, uh, go ahead and start us off. Okay. And that's, okay. If you could, please state your name and address, just for the record. Ms. Dodson will have that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, my name is Marilyn Tucker. I own the property at one twenty-one Scoggins Avenue. I'm not here because I oppose the project. I just want to know how this is going to affect my property, since as I looked at that, those cottages appear to back up to what is Scoggins. But as I looked at the document, it's not clear how this is going to impact the few of us left on Scoggins. And then if I'm in a position where I want to sell my property, because right now I've got that disc golf to the left of my property, and so I see it all be swallowing up. So is it advantageous for me to talk to Sing? Or is it more advantageous for me to go out and find somebody else to buy my property? Because at some point in time, those of us who are left, we're going to get swallowed up. And what I see getting ready to happen is that the traffic on Scoggins come next March is going to increase. And it's already a no, it's a dead-end street. So what is the, I just haven't felt that there's been any consideration to those of us who are left outside of the boundaries of the town center. And we still kind of represent that old Morrisville. And there's been no consideration to us as to what we ought to be looking at in the future. And so that's my question. What should I be doing with my property? Because to the right of me is a vase, is vacant property. And so there really only four houses left on Scoggins. And I have one of them.
Thank you. I mean, I can't speak to that, but I'm sure that, um, Mr. Zuderman could speak to you at some point in the future or whatever you would decide to do with your property. But yeah, that's.
Well, I understand that, but can somebody tell me now what's going to happen with, when they start doing what they're going to do on Scog, on Carolina and all of those places, what's going to happen to us? Am I going to be able to get in my driveway? I mean, are we going to have?
So, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Because, you know, yes, because we already had that street blocked off and trucks were backing up in my yard. So I see my property value going down as a result of a project that they're already talking about. They don't even know what it's going to cost, all these unknown figures. Well, I'm in the same boat, the unknown.
So if I may, Mr. Chair. So, um, Ms. Tucker, this project will not impact your property. This project extends only up to property that we own on the end of Scoggins Avenue. Um, so you will not have your property impacted by this phase of the project. There, as, as they begin to figure out how to, um, come on site for construction, there may be some construction vehicles, but we would be reaching out to you in advance of that with, through Sing to make sure that you're aware of what that's happening, they would not be coming onto your property or turning around in your yard. We'll make clear that all of those know where to be at the end of the road, no interference with your property. And I'd be happy to talk to you about your property and the town's interest in that for the future.
So just one more question.
Sure, of course.
So when you say that it comes to the edge of where Scoggins ends, so what's that going to do to that disc golf disc area?
Oh, so that's going to, that's a temporary disc golf course. So that course will come out as construction begins. That disc golf course is essentially in the middle of what will be the town green area.
So then it really doesn't come to the end of Scoggins, it's going to come to the edge of my property?
It's going to come, yeah, it's going to come to the edge of the property the town owns, so it will be up towards your property, but won't interfere with your property directly.
So don't say it's going to come up towards it. It's going to come to the, it's going to border my property line.
It's going to, it's going to come close. I think the final, uh, design has to be done. Yes, it's going to be close to your property. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, well, sure, go ahead. If you have a quick. I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Tucker's concerns. Right now, there is a limit to the scope of the project. But eventually that scope could expand. And that could affect the properties where Ms. Tucker lives on Skoggins and and other properties.
That's fair. And so, you know, we have been talking with a number of the property owners on both Carolina and Skoggins. We are interested if the, if the owner is interested in selling, the town has an interest in purchasing those at fair market value. So we would be happy to have that conversation. And of course, if the owner is not willing to sell, there is no intent to try to take over any property at this point.
As of now.
Correct. I would also share that our town council has consistently shared that they do not like the idea of condemning any property and would would very much prefer if, again, if owners are willing to sell, that we're willing to make a purchase at fair market value. We're not expecting anything that they wouldn't get from selling it to someone else.
So there's no thought of eminent domain at this point?
That's correct. And our, and our council has very, I think, very clearly spoken that they do not intend to do that in, in this situation.
Okay. So is there anyone else here that would like to make a public comment on this matter? See, fair number of people here. Just, if that's the case, then I will close the public comment period. Do we have any other board comments based on anything else we've heard? So do we have anyone that would be interested in making a motion to recommend approval of the previously So if we do not have a, any interest in approving the ordinance, then we would need to continue this. I guess what would be the next steps then?
So I would say.
Of saying no?
I'm sorry?
If we didn't, if we have no interest in, so I suppose we could also take a motion to recommend disapproval.
Take a motion to disapprove?
Well, if I'm being, okay.
Well, I would say, if I may, Mr. Chair, that if you are seeking more information, we're happy to bring that information back to you. I would, I would suggest that a motion to disapprove would be challenging in the sense of we would need to understand what, what component of it perhaps you disapprove. So I do think we have the opportunity to answer some additional questions before you, before you may do that by coming back.
So I think this is where it gets to that circular argument. Is this a foregone conclusion? Is this a formality? Or we're looking for actual opinion and assessment?
We are looking for feedback on the, on the agreement.
That's what we need to understand what we're being asked for. Because if it's just the general concept, I don't think any of us are really just comfortable saying yes to a concept. I think we need more information to make that decision. I think just as it stands now, very nice design, but there are implications for things that we've talked about previously about traffic and congestion and all of the assumptions that we're making. I think we need, we need that data. So that clarity is what we'll, what we'll need.
For me, I can say the clarity would be for $20 million of what this would cost. It just seems to me, if we have the parking, we have office space, and all we need is a field in the middle and some playground equipment, it could be done for less than 20 million and somebody else go build some buildings on the edge. So I don't see the value for the $20 million. The concept and the drawings are all nice, but we're not involved with the part that makes the income, which is the housing. Those rental units is what's going to make Singh the money. We have a field and we're using city money to put on events that don't necessarily bring income back to us. So that's what my concern is.
Okay. So I guess if, if you'll be willing to withdraw the motion, I think it may be more constructive if we were to continue this to next time. Maybe you'll have some further data. You can flush that out.
Make a motion and ask for clarity.
Then we could be, yeah.
That make it instead of this, this and everything else, let's just get right to the point, you know, with it. And just if we have a special data, we'd have to push it to the next planning meeting.
Your next planning meeting, it's at, I can't remember the date offhand, but I would be looking at the, the second Thursday of July, which would be your next regular meeting. I did, if I could, want to respond to something that member Totera indicated regarding traffic. Just wanting to remind the board on that, and there seems to be maybe a little confusion about the focus of this and it being the development agreement. The, the planned development agreement and the rezoning was previously approved. And that was something that went through the Planning and Zoning Board and went through Town Council and had public hearings of its own. So that planned development agreement established the code for the project. It talks about your permitted uses, your architecture, your design. And that's where the TIA was also done, that looked at traffic impacts. And there were specifics in there related to what was going to happen on all the different streets. So that is all dictated by the already approved plan development agreement.
Thank you. So I guess once again, would we be willing to vote, to table this to next meeting with the request that we be brought the, as much additional information as possible to clarify what exactly we would be voting on? Rather than just simply flat saying no, which I don't think would help council as much. And I don't think would help the public as much. What's really on the table? I mean, is, is the feedback in there saying that there's another option here to her point to say, you know, we can do something different? Is that actually? So what I've heard is that people want to, and I've noticed there's definitely things that say this will be filled in later. And I think what we've consistently heard is people wanted to have a more complete set of information. But just as the planning directors pointed out, I mean, we've already committed to certain aspects of this as far as the zoning conditions, the traffic analysis and all that. All we're doing now is filling in the details of that and recommending to approve or disapprove this part that is within that framework we've got. So I guess the feeling is if we needed additional information, which I agree, we could have more. But again, we are also early in the stage that, as I mentioned, the council is not going to just vote on nothing. They're going to have more complete information. But I think it would be the most constructive to try to get as much information as possible rather than saying just simply for the lack of information that we flatly deny or flatly recommend no.
How many haven't read, how many would like to read the document again?
I mean, yeah, 100 pages.
For, for that reason, I'll, I'll withdraw that motion. But at the same time, it doesn't seem like it's pulled together well. So everything looks pretty and it all looks nice. But we don't even have a real schedule. We don't have anything that represents the estimate was done correctly. There was any estimate done at all, not even swag estimates or what level and how much contingency. And, you know, there's, there's just nothing here to say we should invest money at this point, other than it's pretty. And we have no idea 20 million isn't that much money. Is it going to be 50 million? I mean, that's a huge investment to build a field with some playground equipment. So that, that's what my concern is. And it might not change by next month if there isn't some sales pitch over where the income's coming out of this park.
Well, I mean, parks don't create in, income. Parks are something that consistently.
Dollars for it.
So I guess one thing, it would be nice to know, what exactly is the $20 million going to be going toward? Is that, any of that going toward the multifamily, the building, any of that? Or is it completely, that is separate, completely 100% separate?
That, that money is completely for the town investment in basically two components, the town green and the infrastructure. And so again, within the town green, I'm sorry?
And the cottages?
No, we do not contribute to the cottage. Singh builds the cottage retail. They will own the, the property that that building or combined building sits on. You know, there's a gap there and then to own those eight parcels. So our, our money would go to the amenities within the park. That includes the stage. It includes a redesign of the education garden as Fred had alluded to, and some amenities back there. It includes our sign boards for messaging. It includes the pockets. It includes the sign. It includes the public art at the front, along with some misters for an entryway there. Again, it also includes the upgrades to Foxglove Drive extension to Carolina Street, as well as Town Hall Drive for adding parking and reducing the, the slip lane or eliminating the slip lane that puts you onto Carolina quickly.
I just think, I think more than anything else, it's the timeframe to go through 100 pages and digest it and not crash for a test or a final on anything. I think that's it. I don't think it's no or whatever there might be. I just think for everybody's clarification in their mind, I think that's the point.
I've just, having read through this, there, in my opinion, nothing in those words is going to answer the questions that people have. Because the vast majority of that are things that were just taken straight from the general statutes and they're being regurgitated out. So it can be a legal agreement. So there's just the information, you know, there's a lot in there that is legalese. You know, he summarized it fairly well, at least from what I remember reading through there. So.
Those, if everybody's, if everybody still has questions.
I agree.
Regarding, send those questions over. That could be sent back to both the partners on this, that information that everyone's mine.
So yeah, I guess it sounds, obviously, we certainly don't have any appetite to recommend approval.
Sure.
So I think, do you feel like you have a grasp on maybe fleshing out some of this additional information to bring back to the next meeting?
I do.
So I do think that we wouldn't do that. So I guess I would entertain a motion to continue this and request additional information for next time.
I'll make a motion.
But you're actually the alternate tonight, so you can't make the motion.
I'll make a motion to continue this.
Do we have a second?
And provide additional information.
Do we have a second?
Do we want to clarify what additional information?
Well, I mean, that's.
Personally, I would like to see the RFP. I would like to see the appraisal report.
I'm sorry, the RFP and what was the second item?
Appaisal report, assesses report.
I don't want to get too far out of our lane. I mean, so yeah, I mean, if that's something that we can be given.
I think we're happy to show that to you. I think that, that one thing I would ask you to consider is that what's different about this is that you normally get brought on projects like the complete, this is what's going to happen. This one's a little different because some of that will change because Town Council is going to give some of that direction. So what we can give you is what we have now, I think, with an understanding that they may choose to make decisions that alter, you know, some of the costs. They may do alternates and other things. But we can certainly get you, we're waiting right now for the more defined budget as far as what that 19-point million dollars it relates to. We have it, it's right now, it just is not by amenity. The, it's a, it's a bulk number based on the different components of, you know, infrastructure and park. But it doesn't have it broken out by, this would be the stage cost and this would be the, the cost for, you know, that, that street and things like that. So once we have that.
I've put together this exact investment. That does exist.
Oh, no, it's coming.
They didn't just take it up there. So I will say it's, you know, it, yeah, that it exists. Somebody has it. They, they, if it's even square foot by the street or whatever. I mean, so that part does exist and it should be relatively easy to produce.
So we will bring you back. You're looking for the original RFP that selected Singh?
Yes.
I mean, that's, yeah, that's available too.
For me, I'm looking for general, they have ROI. I'd like to see it from, or 20 million, what the ROI would be for us. And then we were missing A, C, several, several sections.
Yeah, there's, there's some legal description of properties that, that will be added that, you know, I don't know if impact the, the agreement, but I understand you, you would like to see all those items.
Yeah, just general, it doesn't need to be detailed estimate, but there needs to be some kind of large buckets and then some level of confidence. And if you did any type of risk assessments over the project as well, that would be interesting to see for benefit.
Yeah.
So the cost estimation was made in 2021?
I'm sorry, the cost, no, this cost estimate was completed last week. So we, we initially had a conceptual cost estimate that was lower. And then that, they didn't, we didn't advance on that because we knew we needed a level of detail, also being very concerned about how the market is right now. And it's, the costs are increasing. I think it's starting to stabilize a little bit now, but costs have been so crazy and cost changes over the last two to three years that we wanted to wait until we had a very good idea of what that full conceptual design was so that Singh through Bobbitt could price that out and be, and have a number that, that we could rely on. And so right now, and again, we'll get you the details, you know, there is some contingency in that $19 million number to account for things. But it's also, you know, something that was finished last week. So we are optimistic that that is a, a solid number.
Any other sort of specific questions that people, aside from just what we generally spoke about?
For the board's information, your next meeting is July 11. And I guess I'd ask just both the board and manager Zudima about special meeting. Is there openness to that? Do we think we need to do that?
I mean, personally, I would be open. Anyone else open to another meeting?
It depends on timing.
Well, of course, I mean, we would have to work that out. But I mean, is there any general openness to another meeting? What did you say, in like two weeks? Would that be adequate time?
I think I need to have some conversation with staff a little bit around that. That, that may be enough time. But I'm looking at when the council meeting is. So we wouldn't take it June 25. We could potentially take it July 9. So if there was an opportunity to come back to you before then, that would let us potentially take it to council July 9 rather than waiting until July 23. But we, I can work with Michelle and we can get you some options for a potential meeting date if you're open to that.
If, if we want to keep the public hearing live, we would want to pick a, a date tonight. Or if we're still within the notice window, we could re-notice.
Scheduled meeting is so close.
I mean, you're saying to.
Scheduled meeting is so close.
I mean, I guess the question would be, what would the impact if we waited? Would that violate any of the agreement we previously have? I mean.
No, at this point, the, the most time sensitive, I mean, obviously, we delay the start of the project. I think that goes without saying. But the most time sensitive piece is that taking this to LGC after council has seen it, because it has to go to council to be seen. Then it would have to go to LGC for approval before Town Council could approve it. And then there's also some bond timing associated with this, but we can work through that.
Work through that and that if we were to take this up in the meeting on the 11th, it'd be fine? Or would you still prefer to do a meeting prior to that?
I think at this point, with some scheduling conflicts, we may want to do that the 11th and make sure that we bring you full information and that, because again, that also gives us time to get it to you in advance and not, again, apologize. We, we were trying to finish this up and getting information in this week. So I think the 11th probably makes the most sense.
So then we will continue the public hearing till the 11th. So I guess we, so we have a motion.
We threw it.
Well, right, but then we made another, we have another motion to request, to continue this to the next meeting. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Based on the discussions we've had. It's all in favor of that. So that carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you, Development Team, Singh. All right. So then we can move on to staff comments.
Thank you, Brooke. Appreciate it. So just to go over some items from the latest newsletter. So there were no new site plans received or administrative approvals granted since the last time we met. Town Council did review and approve the Southport Master Site Plan. I believe that that's the last item that came before this body. In other news, Town Council is continuing to have discussions with Habitat for Humanity about a potential project on Church Street. So we're continuing to evaluate and look into that as a possibility. The fiscal year '25 budget was approved Tuesday night. So if you weren't aware, that that budget was approved. And it does include within it funds for an affordable housing rental assistance program. So staff will be looking at moving that initiative forward as well in the coming year. Two major studies that we've been working on, the Morrisville Parkway Comprehensive Access Management Study and the Sturrock Iron Creek Greenway Feasibility Study, both of those are wrapping up. Both of those are expected to be presented to Town Council on June 25 with draft action to accept those studies. It's not really an approval or denial. It's a study. It's not a. It's not really an approval or denial, it's a study, it's, it's not an official plan, but both, both of those are major projects for the town. Obviously, Morrisville Parkway, there's been a lot of interest there with some of the issues along that corridor, so that will establish, the, the study sets, sets for some ideas for improvement that would still need to go into the next design phase and then we'd figure out how to fund it. But, but the study is, is the first part of that. And then the Stirrup Iron Creek Greenway Feasibility Study is looking at a greenway called for in the comprehensive transportation plan that is really more on the east side of town, kind of goes behind some of those properties along the McCrimmon Parkway Extension and really extends from about Aviation up to I-40 in that area. Would note that both of those studies received grant funding. The Stirrup Iron Creek Study was done at no cost to the town, so that is fantastic. And the Morrisville Parkway Access Management Study, the town's contribution is only 13,000. So those two projects combined would normally be hundreds of thousands of dollars, so just did want to point that out. And then at the last council meeting, Town Council was briefed for the second time on the UDO amendments that you reviewed, masonry painting, some things related to the public works facility, but I think most notably is probably the tobacco, hemp vaping. Those amendments are still under review. We got some additional feedback from Town Council Tuesday night, so we are continuing to run more maps and, and do more evaluation, but those amendments are still in progress. And that is all I have.
Thank you. So board comments, Sushma? Tim? Chris? All commented out? Well, thanks for the work with everything. Adveris is gone already, but, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone.